Good evening. It's exciting to see so many people here this evening. Welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of July 3, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman, here. Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Castleberry.
Here.
Councilmember Hickman. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Girl Scout Troop 836. At this time, William McGovern Fag, Troop 217, will lead us in the National Anthem. Nice job. Item number three is a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma honoring the 2019 recipient of the citizens' honor role of service. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
... Oklahoma honoring the 2019 recipient of the citizens' honor role of service. Whereas the City Council adopted the citizens' recognition policy on October 28, 2008, and wishes to acknowledge the leadership of its citizens on boards, commissions, and important civic projects, and whereas the citizens' honor role of service is intended to honor an individual whose work benefits or has benefited the quality of life in Norman by building on and making the efforts of government richer and more successful. Whereas Chris Nanny was appointed to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan Citizens Visioning Committee on September 27, 2011, and the Transit Capacity and Quality of Services Subcommittee on January 22, 2013. And whereas she has served on the Human Rights Commission since November 14, 2017, whereas she is a strong advocate for the disability community, having served as Chair of the University of Oklahoma's Card Access Advisory Committee for over 10 years, recently serving on the City's American with Disabilities Act, ADA, Citizens Steering Committee during the city's ADA self-evaluation process, and being recently appointed to the city's new ADA Citizens Advisory Committee. And whereas she has also served the greater Norman community through her previous employment as a tutor and teaching assistant for Norman Public Schools, and her current employment as tutor and assistant librarian for Terra Verde School. And whereas her leadership and various contributions to the city and the greater community as a whole has helped Norman continue to build a more inclusive and accessible community in which to live, work, attend school, and participate in social and civil life, and have greatly enriched the lives of individuals in this community. Now therefore, I, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that Chris Nanny be named the 2019 recipient of the citizens' honor role of service for unfailing dedication and contributions to the citizens of Norman.
Should I come around? Oh, there we go. Thank you, sir. Well, oh my goodness, what a surprise. Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Council. Oh my gosh, this has been such a joy to serve the City of Norman on all of these committees. And all of the things that I've done, I've done because I love my community. And I love the City of Norman. We are such a progressive, caring, just giving community. And we all work so well and so hard together to make this a better place. And that's why I've done all the things I've done. And I know that's why all of you do all the things you do. So I don't deserve this. I'm accepting this humbly for all of you, all of us. All of us here contribute lots of different talents, and skills, and passions to make our community a better place. And it's just been so exciting and so wonderful to serve in all the different ways that I have. You know, the transportation is such a big, just, you know, such an important part of our community. And being on the Human Rights Commission has been so exciting, and now serving on the ADA Committee. And I just look forward to all the exciting things that are going to happen. And I'll continue to be here, and I hope all of you will continue to be here, and continue to share your passion and your skills, and all of the wonderful ways that all of us contribute. So thank you very much.
Okay, this brings us to the administration of the Oaths of Office, but I have a couple of presentations that I want to make before Robert and I go down there and new people are seated. The first one is, this goes to Councilmember Castleberry, who has been my faithful friend. Uh-oh. And broached in, that means he always had to fill in when I couldn't come. He was always there, he was always at the ready. He's been our finance chair, he's been our bean counter, he has really taken care for all of us, helped all of us learn more about accounting and budgets and that kind of thing. So I want you to take it out of the...
You sure?
Take it out, it doesn't bite, and then I'm going to say why I showed it. Okay, so I was gonna get him a green visor, but that didn't seem nearly as fun as the And the second thing goes to, soon to be in absolute minutes, to Mayor Clark. So this is something that I struggled with. I'm very forgetful. We have all these pins, and we have these name tags, and I'm always forgetting one thing. So I had something made for you, so you won't have so much to remember.
Oh, it's the name tag with the pin in it.
Okay, this brings us to the administering of the Oaths of Office II and establishing the seating of Mayor-elect Bria Clark, Councilmember-elect Kate Bierman, Councilmember-elect Sarita Wilson, and Councilmember-elect Stephen Tyler Holman, and Councilmember Allison Petron. So at this time, I recognize Judge Porch to administer the Oaths of Office.
Councilmember Clark, please step down here with me. If you will raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Bria Clark, do solemnly swear...
I, Bria Clark, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive...
And that I will not knowingly receive...
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear...
I further swear...
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties...
...as mayor to the best of my ability.
As mayor, to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, I declare you duly sworn and seated to the office of mayor of the City of Norman.
Mayor, if you want to take that seat that I vacated right there. She got another one, all right. She didn't have one. Right here. Whichever one you want. All right. So next, I'm gonna ask Bierman to come forward. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kate Bierman...
I, Kate Bierman...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly...
That I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
...as councilmember to the best of my ability.
As councilmember to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, I declare you duly sworn. Mr. Petron, you're next. There she is. You'll raise your right hand, you've had two to go to school on already. There we go. I, Allison Petron...
I, Allison Petron.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive...
That I will not knowingly receive.
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
...as councilmember to the best of my ability.
As councilmember to the best of my ability.
I declare you duly sworn and seated to the office of councilmember of the City of If you'll raise your right hand like the others, and repeat after me. I, Sarita Wilson...
I, Sarita Wilson.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive...
That I will not knowingly receive.
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or non-performance...
Performance or non-performance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
...as councilmember to the best of my ability.
As councilmember.
Declare you duly sworn. Mr. Holman, if you'd join me too, please. Raise your right hand if you would, please. I, Stephen Tyler Holman...
I, Stephen Tyler Holman.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma. And that I will not knowingly receive...
That I will not knowingly receive.
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office...
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
...as councilmember to the best of my ability.
As councilmember to the best of my ability.
We will now move on to item five, nomination and appointment of an eligible person to fill the council vacancy in Ward Six. I will entertain a motion to appoint Bill Scanlon, as recommended by the Ward Six Selection Committee. Do I have a second?
So, second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That is unanimous. Judge Porch, I would like to authorize you to administer the Oath of Office II and establishing the seating of Bill Scanlon for Ward Six.
I, Bill Scanlon...
I, Bill Scanlon.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive...
That I will not knowingly receive.
...directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
...any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
...for the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance.
...of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
...other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear...
I further swear.
...that I will faithfully discharge my duties...
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
...as councilmember to the best of my ability.
As councilmember to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Councilmember Scanlon. Thank you, Judge Porch. I'll entertain a motion to nominate Councilmember Holman as Mayor Pro Tem.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number eight, election of a representative and an alternate representative to the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors. I will entertain a motion to nominate myself as representative and Councilmember Bierman as alternate representative of the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Good job, Allison. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number nine, election of a representative and an alternate representative to the Association of Central Oklahoma Government Board of Directors. I will entertain a motion to nominate myself as representative and Councilmember Holman as alternate representative of the Association of Central Oklahoma Government Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number 10, election of a city council member to serve on the Board of Trustees for the City of Norman Retirement System. I will entertain a motion to nominate Councilmember Sarita Wilson to serve on the Board of Trustees for the City of Norman Retirement System.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number 11, a resolution 1920-8 extending appreciation to Robert Castleberry for serving as Ward Three Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
...our democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of the government, and those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities. And whereas those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community, and bring their own unique talents, values, and abilities to the job, and they assume a demanding task to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands. And whereas, Robert Castleberry served on the City Council representing Ward Three from August 14, 2012, to July 3, 2019, and was Mayor Pro Tem from July 5, 2016, to July 2, 2019. And whereas, Robert served on the Finance Committee from August 14, 2012, to July 2, 2019, and chaired that committee from July 4, 2017, to July 2, 2019. And he served on the Oversight Committee from August 14, 2012, to July 2, 2013, chaired that committee from July 5, 2016, to July 4, 2017, and was a member from July 3, 2018, to July 2, 2019. And whereas, Robert served on the Board of Trustees for the City of Norman Retirement System from July 2, 2013, to July 4, 2017, and again from July 3, 2018, to July 2, 2019, was an alternate member of the Board of the Association of Center Oklahoma Governments from July 1, 2014, to July 3, 2018, and was a member of the Central Oklahoma Regional Transit Authority Task Force. And whereas, from the beginning, Robert was very actively involved in the budget process, and was passionate about approving a balanced budget, using his accounting experience to find creative ways to use or save money. And whereas, as a volunteer coach, Robert was a staunch proponent of the Norman Forward Initiative, and remained supportive and very vocal about each project, including where they would be located, the project timetables, the costs, and when they would be completed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman, commends and extends appreciation to Robert Castleberry for his years of service to this community as Councilmember for Ward Three. Wish him well in his future endeavors.
There's no thing to look at there. Just made a few notes here. It's been an honor to serve. Turn around, or... I feel like I'm talking to you guys, actually. So I want you to know it's been an honor to serve on the City Council. I've had the pleasure, joy, honor, whatever you want to call it, of being elected every possible way that you can. I got elected by council, had a draw of a hat, got elected by not drawing an opponent twice, and then elected just at the ballot. So during the seven years I was on council, I served with 22 different council members, two different mayors, two different city managers, but fortunately, just one city clerk. And so that's one thing I really want to emphasize, is that we have not only the best staff in the state, but we have the best city clerk in the state. And... but we have the best city clerk in the state. And Brenda is and without a doubt, you are the best cat herder, I mean councilmember organizer that any of us could ever ask. You know, we have questions, Brenda, what do we do? Where are we supposed to go? Brenda is that person that takes care of you, makes sure that, you know, although we do a pretty good job of embarrassing ourselves, she makes sure that we never embarrass ourselves by doing something that we're not supposed to be procedurally. And so I want to thank you for that. And Ellen, of course, you and I have been knowing each other since leadership in Norman. And just having you there, I really appreciate everything you've done. And Mary, thank you so much for inter- So I know I've kind of talked to each one of your councilmembers, or I haven't, I will, and tell you kind of personally some of my thoughts. But really tonight, I just wanted to mainly talk to staff. And, you know, when you look at the things that we've been able to accomplish, we passed the largest quality of life initiative with Norman Forward, the largest transportation bond. In especially in Ward Three, we replaced two bridges, emergencies. We fixed Burlington. So it took me five years to get Burlington fixed, but we finally get Burlington fixed. For those of you who don't know, we had an allergy problem for five years and we could not figure this out. But where's Mr. O'Leary? He's normally sitting right there. But Sean O'Leary worked with me for a long time to figure out how to do this. We came under budget on a couple of projects and we were able to find some money in the engineering to fix that. So with Sean and Scott and Catherine, Christina, Ricky, Beth, Jane, Ken, Judd, Anthony, of course. You know, we have a lot of people that we don't see that are out there day to day doing the mowing, picking up the trash, do all that kind of stuff like this that we don't see. But our executive team is ones that we deal with. And everybody that I have dealt with at the executive level has been professional, hardworking. They care about the city also. We're one of the leanest staffs there is. We should start looking at it. We always talk about how lean we are. And I think they do a great job. So I really just want to say thank you to them. And that's really about it. Congratulations, Councilmember Patron. You're going to do a great job and you will be hearing from me. So, thank you. As a constituent, as a constituent.
Item number 12, resolution 1920-9 extending appreciation to Lynn Miller for serving as mayor in Norman, Oklahoma. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Whereas, the health and well-being of a democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of the government and those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities. And whereas, those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community and bring their own unique talents, values, and abilities to the job, and they assume a demanding task to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands. And whereas, Lynn Miller served on the City Council representing Ward Five from July 2, 2013 to July 5, 2016, and was sworn in as mayor of the City of Norman on July 5, 2016. And whereas, Lynn grew up in Norman, worked as an educator at Norman Public Schools for 30 years, and has a long history of leadership and involvement in her church and numerous nonprofit community organizations, including the Pioneer Library Board, the Norman Area Land Conservancy, the Oklahoma Electric Cooperative Foundation Board, and the Norman Soonor Rotary Club. And whereas, throughout her tenure, she served on the City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee, Oversight Committee, and Finance Committee, the Strategic Water Supply Committee, and was one of the council liaisons for the Stormwater Citizens Steering Committee. And whereas, Lynn has faced many challenges and worked tirelessly with city staff throughout her term on a multitude of issues, just to name a few. Environmental initiatives resulting in the adoption of a resolution expressing a commitment to endeavor to transition the city to 100% renewable energy by 2050, a solution for Norman stormwater needs, the adoption of a transition plan to address Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA issues in Norman, and the solutions for the Norman Forward projects. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman, on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman, commends and extends appreciation to Lynn Miller for her years of service to this community as mayor and councilmember for Ward Five, and wish her well in her future endeavors.
Okay, so I don't really have a speech. And one of the things I say at a lot of the council meetings is I speak last. And by the time they get to me, they've already said it all. And Councilmember Castleberry said a lot of what I'm thinking and what I'm feeling. Being elected as mayor of the city where you grew up, your hometown, is such a privilege. And it's such an amazing opportunity. And you learn so much about your city that I don't think there's any other way to learn it as you learn it when you're on the City Council and when you're, and when you are mayor. I have had an opportunity to work with some of the most amazing people, the most amazing citizens, the most amazing staff of people. Robert said it. I'm not going to go over the whole thing. But because of the fact that I am retired, I spent a lot of time down here in my office. And so I got to know the staff in a way that I don't think everyone else gets to know them. And I was constantly impressed with, you couldn't ask them a question that they didn't, oh yeah, we're already on that, we've already done this, that, and the other. Always willing to help, always supportive, always professional, and always wanting to do what's best for the community. I want to say to the council, this is a very creative, energetic, passionate group of people. And I know Allison will join and will be the same way. They have lots of ideas for making our city a better place. And I very much appreciate that. And I wish the very best for you in the next year, two, three, however long you serve. And Mayor Clark, being mayor is a challenge. It's really a hard job. It's a big responsibility. And it's one of the reasons I feel a little relief tonight, even though I'm very, very sad because I'm not going to be in the middle of making decisions and problem solving and doing things to help the city the way that the city council does. So I just want to thank all of you. Mary, it's been a joy to work with you since you have been here. Catherine, Brenda, Ellen are all great friends. Bryce on the lease, and I could go around to everybody. But good luck, Bill. Bill and I worked together on the Stormwater Citizens Committee and got to know each other. And I think you all have a great group, and I wish you the very best. I'll be reading about you in the newspaper.
Before we wrap up, I have a few comments of my own. I again want to extend my thanks and gratitude to Robert and Lynn. Robert has been the longest-serving councilmember and finance expert on the council. I've learned a lot from him, and he's guided me through some tough issues, and you will be greatly missed. So stay involved because the City of Norman needs you. Mayor Miller's service to Norman has spanned over several decades, and she can say confidently that she has made Norman a better place. Lynn has steered us through some very difficult issues, and I believe her leadership has set us up for success going forward. And it is up to this council to see it all through. I am personally grateful for her support and guidance that she has shown me over the last several months. And although she has assured me she will be there for me if I need here, I promise to let her enjoy retirement as much as possible. Thank you, Lynn. This is an exciting time for me and my family, and I have received so much support from family, friends, and residents. Thank you to everyone, especially those who are here tonight who drove from out of state to share this moment with me. I specifically want to address my amazing husband. I wouldn't be here without your support. You put up with my insane schedule, my incessant debate of local politics, and all the yard signs in the garage. You are everything to me. To my kids, who I think are spent in or out in the hallway, but I'll tell them anyways in case they watch this someday. To my kids, I love you. I know our family dynamic has changed a bit, but we have an opportunity to do something special in our community with my new role as mayor. With that said, my role as your mom will always be the most important role that I ever have. As the mayor of this great city, I am committed to prioritizing inclusivity, collaborating with our partners, and leading with respect. I ask the same of my colleagues here tonight. I am confident we can truly work as a team, be open and honest with each other, and when we disagree, do it respectfully. Norman needs us to be a team, and we are stronger together. There is a sense of hope and optimism in this city that has been missing for some time. But to all of you here tonight and watching from home, I challenge you to stay engaged. Continue to follow the issues, attend meetings, and engage your family, coworkers, and neighbors about what is going in in our city. Local government is the most important level of government because the decisions we make here, right here in City Hall, impact you far quicker than decisions made in Oklahoma City or Washington, D.C., and we want you with us. This team up here is clearly willing to do the work, but we need you to stay engaged. If my last three years on this council has taught me anything, the next three years will be filled with challenges and opportunities, successes and failures, and continued traditions along with change. I'm ready for it. So let's get to work. Before we adjourn, I invite you all to join us at the Andrews Park Amphitheater. We have bouncy houses and crafts, free snow cones, Eskimo snow, and also a lot of performances from some amazing dance groups. And I invite you to celebrate this change of leadership and to appreciate the leadership that came before. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
So moved. There we go.